Let's, I guess, let's get this straight. Welcome all to the June 18th City of Fort Angeles Council meeting. And I would like to please have a vote call.
Mayor Brook.
Present.
Attorney Mayor Dexter.
Here.
Councilmember French.
Here.
Councilmember Kid.
Here.
Councilmember Meredith.
Here.
Councilmember Moran.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman Warren.
Senator Lee.
Manager West.
Present.
Attorney Lee.
Here.
Thank you all. So, um, let's, please rise with our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the people who live in the streets of San Antonio, one nation, one government, and universal justice for all.
So next, we usually go to several new matters or recommendations or, you know, forty recommendations, but we did have one recognition. We'd like to recognize our councilmember Kid on being named in the City of USA.
Yes. Congratulations.
All right. Next, we go to public comment. Uh, we have got one person signed up for public comment. We got Susan Milker. So, surprise. And please state your name and whether you live in the city of Fort Angeles or not.
Hello, I'm Susan Milker, and no, I do not live in the city. So, um, I just came in late on your meeting that you were talking about money, and probably need to look at volunteers if you want to, um, stretch it. Maybe adopt your parks out to churches, like each church take a park, and then the people who work in the parks can maybe do co-compliance or something like that. So, I mean, we can make it work. Um, Kathy is alive and well. We're taking care of all those homeless out there. Our flowers is spreading hope. Um, Rainhouse is selling lots of beautiful flowers, and a lot of people have them, and Wayne's doing flowers for downtown, so, um, we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. We are, um, doing a new store. We're gonna do a thrift store and sell all the furniture that people donate to us. So, it's a new adventure, and you should be seeing it in the next couple of weeks. So, um, and I'm hoping to get our clients to maybe learn how to polish furniture or refinish it or something like that. That's something they're capable of doing, unlike they, they can't garden because they don't know the difference between a plant and a weed, so, they can't do that. Um, I wanna come and talk to you soon about a project for two porta-potties and maybe some trash cans, and maybe I could give out garbage bags to people, and then they can collect them, and I can reward them for, you know, bringing garbage, because everybody keeps saying it's all just homeless garbage, so I'm willing to at least cover costs somehow. So, I'm gonna try write a grant where maybe one of the banks will, you know, we're gonna try this. Um, the bill project, you guys asked for a meeting, you invited certain people, you didn't let the public, we really feel scammed on that. It was kinda like it was already decided what was gonna happen, and that's really not how I run anything, and I kinda feel that, so you guys just were a little bit through. So, um, and we just didn't feel good, but, um, I'm here to listen and see what else is going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to address the council at this time? Please feel free. Welcome.
Good evening, gentlemen of Fort Angeles, Director Carthy and Rita's efforts. On back of the board, I'd just like to extend an invitation to council to come up to your board this Saturday. We are having a very large community event. I've been, I'll get off with each of you here from May to Halloween, we'll be having a whole array of different aircraft and vendors, and it's gonna be a pretty big public event, so please feel free to come up and join us again. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So, um, anybody else in the audience who would like to address council? All right. Uh, seeing, there we go. Seeing none, uh, we will move on to lead items. Anybody here have a lead item?
Do have a lead item. This comes out in relation to the Association of Washington Cities Conference that, well, three of us plus the city manager are attending in a week or so, and we need to designate three voting delegates to vote at the AWC business meeting, so I'd like to suggest we add that as a lead item, or move to add that as a lead item.
Okay. I'll second that. If we need the action, if it needs to be a separate action beyond whose.
Well, do we have four folks who agree that this needs to be added as a lead item?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. So, we'll add it under other, uh, let's see, yeah, under, first, other considerations. Thank you. Other considerations after the think tank. Two, three. Okay.
And Mayor, council, we also have the city fire department's annual report on your dais, which is also a lead item for information.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Um, so now we go to the consent agenda. This is probably the shortest consent agenda I've ever seen. Um, so, let me read the consent agenda. City council minutes, June 4th, 2019, and expenditure report from May 25th, 2019 through June 7th, 2019, in the amount of eight hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-five cents.
Move to accept the consent agenda is read.
Second. Madam Mayor, council, before you vote, just a clarification on the minutes. I am noted as present, and I was not present at that meeting, just to clarify. Thank you.
So, with the correction of the minutes, any further discussion? Okay. All those who favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? It passes unanimously. Okay. Well, it is not quite six thirty, so, we will move on to then, Jane, ordinances in the electric utility of Fort Angeles Municipal Code. We will conduct the first reading.
Well, thank you, councilmembers.
Well, this is trial by fire, isn't it? Your first meeting, your first day in the office.
Uh, it is, um, but I would just start off by saying that cannot be more excited to be here, very excited for my family to get up here and join me, um, but I just talked to my wife a couple hours ago and expressed, uh, my extreme gratitude for the amazing leadership team that you have here. Everybody's been so excellent, um, so I'm really excited, and it feels like a great fit. With that, I'm gonna talk about something I don't really know about.
And then for the audience, this is Thomas Hunter. He is our new public works director.
So, um, if.
Brandon.
Jason was kind enough to come tonight to, to help me out, steer me clear of saying anything really erroneous, um, but before you, um, you have some proposed changes to the electrical utility. I did meet with Solish this morning and talked about those specifics. My general impression is that I think that these are, um, changes that are really just kind of clean work. Um, as you can see, um, in the proposal, that there is no, um, financial impact as it relates to the utility, um, but these do seem to be very prudent, uh, broader steps to the ever-going, everlasting process of updating code. Um, so I think that with that, if anybody has any specific questions, I can try and answer them, um, but I think it's really just some really prudent, clean work, um, and, well.
Council, I'll just add a little bit to Director Hunter's report, and that, um, some of this goes back in history that, that Mr. Hunter may not have had, and I think it's important to recognize that back, um, several years ago, we were looking at doing automated metering, and a number of changes were incorporated in the Fort Angeles Municipal Code, particularly the electrical code relative to that change. We did not move forward with that, and therefore those items can be removed. This is an item that went to the Utility Advisory Committee last week, and the Utility Advisory Committee did provide a positive recommendation for, uh, council consideration of this matter. Probably important to note, too, this is simply a first reading. Um, your second reading will be July 2nd.
Thank you.
And I also worked with Solish on doing the ordinance, and what has been presented is absolutely correct. Other changes are kind of minor changes where they are changing, for instance, the walk-in jutsam is a tree line, and lap it, or installations, and so, again, it has no impact on rates.
Great. Council, is there any questions regarding this? All right. Well, seeing none, let me read the ordinance. An ordinance of the city of Fort Angeles, Washington, amending sections to the Fort Angeles Municipal Code relating to electrical services and charges.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to make a comment, but this is very welcome. I voted against the ALI program because of its extremely high cost, and, um, it was something the city didn't use, and I'm happy to get rid of any references to something that's no longer about.
Thank you. Any further comments? All right. So then what we'll do with this is we will, um, move it on to, we'll continue it to the July 2nd meeting. So with that, we will move to the amendments to the wastewater utility.
Yes, and I was able to talk with Jason today. Um, he did a really great job, uh, explaining to me what we're trying to do here. Um, so, so very briefly, um, not to get too far into the weeds, but we're really talking about some consistency with city code versus state regulation, um, what the limits are as far as discharge specific to PH, um, and trying to, and like I said, be consistent with what's required by, uh, regulation. Um, little bit of a change, uh, to remove conflicting language about grease interceptors and garbage disposals, uh, that I thought seemed pretty prudent, um, and then, uh, national pretreatment standards, um, there's some clarification there, um, and I'm trying to come up to speed with what those look like, but obviously very supportive, very qualified staff look at this, um, and so the recommendation is similar to previous, um, this will be a first reading and continue to the July 2nd meeting. I welcome anybody who's been more involved in this to speak, if they feel the issue.
All right. Um, is there any further, did you wanna add anything more?
No.
Okay. Um, any questions from council?
Just a thanks to the UAC for going through this. Uh, I know it's a bore sometimes, but it's important to get it right.
I'll just add that at UAC, there was another, um, change that was suggested, and we will impart information from that at the UAC meeting, so I'm glad to see that that's included here, and that staff will bring that back up, and we should not lose track of those local limits.
All right. So, um, let me read that ordinance. An ordinance of the city of Fort Angeles, Washington, amending chapter thirteen point oh six, industrial wastewater permissions for the, for Fort Angeles City Municipal Code. Okay. So, um, and we will continue this to the July 2nd meeting. Still not six thirty, so, um, let's, you know what? Let's take the other considerations as to the AWC discussion, 'cause I know the think tank's gonna go longer.
Yeah, so on, uh, Thursday, June 27th, the Association of Washington Cities, of which Fort Angeles is voluntarily a part, as well as every other city and town in Washington, um, is having this business meeting. Three of us are going to the conference. That's Mayor Brook, uh, councilmember French, myself, um, as well as manager Nathan West, and, uh, AWC allows us, it does need three voting delegates, um, to vote on our city's behalf, so, um, my suggestion would be that the council, uh, delegate, um, to the three of us, the voting status for the AWC business meeting.
I move that council, uh, delegate the three councilmembers participating in AWC conference to vote in the, the business meeting.
All right. Just maybe a second.
Sir.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? All right. Thank you for bringing that up. It passes unanimously. And we still have a lot of time, so the fire report is just information, it's on your dais, so, any words of, uh, from the chief about your, uh, your report? Chief Dubuque? Uh, anything you would like to tell us about your report from the fire department?
Just that, um, we deliberately submitted it about a month after the police department to make them look good, um, but other than that, no, we're real proud of the work that we've done for the year. Um, 2018's a busy issue we've had on record. Um, we did a lot of work, a lot of really great work, hired some really great people. We have a lot of work left to do, um, but we're real proud of the report, and if you have any questions about it at all, please feel free to get in touch with me, and I'll do anything I can to answer your questions, or, or let me know more about the department anytime.
And did you put any kittens in here? No kittens?
No, there are no kittens. Um, there, there was a bit push at the end to include a kitten page, but we decided not to.
How about any, uh, in the preamble, you mentioned the dress code. Any possibility of seeing what that looked like? What was that? The dress code? In your preamble, you mentioned that dress code, uh, that you were, uh, that I guess your, that I have what's critical, so that's why you're.
I am, I am wardrobe impaired, and so.
I wonder if there's any opportunity to see what that looked like?
Well, that's why I wear the uniform, because otherwise I would embarrass myself, embarrass myself on a daily basis, so, thank you. And thank you for bringing that up, by the way. I appreciate it.
Okay. Well, um, because we still have time, my goodness, this meeting's gonna go very fast. Um, let's, uh, how about we begin with council reports, 'cause I know it's, the think tank's gonna take more than a minute. So, uh, Ms. Kid, would you like to begin with council reports?
Just, uh, I've been gone this last week, and, um, had an opportunity to represent Fort Angeles and Washington State, and I'm delighted that I'm the first, um, person from Washington State ever to hold this national title, so I'll be doing some traveling and some appearances this year, and I'll be reporting back, but I'm so glad that, um, Fort Angeles really came through, and I, I'm grateful to the community for support, 'cause I had so much support. People were really, um, encouraging me and helping me and supporting me all the way, so I'm, I'm very, very grateful for this opportunity, so thank you.
Great.
Congratulations on writing it. And just sitting there as the senior singers, senior class singers were up there, there were several people around me that commented on how nice the sound system was, so I thought, you know, that was great. It was very clear, and, uh, that was nice, and it's just, I think it's a nice venue. It's, uh, nice to have it there, whether that high school gym's where we used to have it when I graduated, and, let's see, oh, on a lighter note, we were at a baseball tournament over in Silicon, not to pick on them, but, uh, we were driving long down the road, and, uh, my passengers happened to say, "Well, if you think Fort Angeles's roads are bad, I wonder what these are rated at?" And, uh, it were, I'm not sure I've seen a Fort Angeles road quite that bad, so we, we shouldn't be that down on ourselves for the pavement rating.
Yeah. Thank you. Take a minute. Um, I guess I'll just say that I'm looking forward to participating in the penny zone for twenty-seven nursing students who are graduating this year, and a number of them have been hired by the hospital, and obviously, well, not obviously, but a number, uh, others have been hired by other local, um, medical providers, so I'm excited that they're, um, going out to start their careers, um, and I think I'll just leave it at that for now. Lindsey?
So, on Saturday, I volunteered at the College Jefferson County Birmingham Lawyers, um, just drop-in clinic, and people just show up and ask questions, just the best session sort of thing, and, once again, um, you know, those questions about, you know, what do I do with my landlord situation, those sorts of things, and it was just a good reminder for me again about how the tight rental vacancy, um, and housing market leads people into not having, learning options, and often ending up staying in unsafe situations because they're not able to move. Five years ago, doing that, um, you know, I, I counseled somebody, and they'd say, "Yeah, yeah, I'm looking at moving," and, you know, that's ultimately the solution here. Now, moving really isn't an option on those planes, and so they stick with really bad landlord-tenant relationships, they might stick with unhealthy, um, situations in their, in their apartments or houses, um, yeah, it's, it, there is a public health impact to our bad housing situation. So, the positive news is one of the bills that the state legislature passed, um, allows us to get some of the state's sales tax revenue, to use it for various affordable housing projects. To be eligible for that, um, and, you know, and other people have already, but we need to pass a resolution by January, uh, saying that we intend to, um, get some of the state's sales tax for this purpose. It's not a tax increase, it's basically the taxes already collected, we get to re-allocate it. Um, so that resolution of intent needs to be in by January, by January, and then we need to actually pass the bill, um, later in, um, 2020. So that is something that I hope that we can move forward with. Um, I sent that information to the mayor and the city manager, um, and it's something that I think is instrumental for us to be going to do what we've talked about in our Housing Needs Assessment, which is, um, begin to put some funding into affordable housing, uh, whether that's a pilot project, whether it's, it's something else, um, we need to start to address this issue, and it is a serious health and safety issue, and, um, you know, it's gone on far too long, too little action on the part of the city. So I'm glad that the state is helping us to make that happen through this additional revenue source.
I don't have much to report. I did attend a chamber finance committee meeting, there's not a lot going on there, but a lot of great news. Uh, one thing the chamber is playing is the Independence Day celebrations coming up here, there's a lot of planning going into it, there's gonna be a lot of events, parade, obviously, but there's really events happening all day long, I'm excited for the cornball tournament, and I think that's gonna be happening on July 4th, if I'm not mistaken. Hopefully I'll see you downtown.
Really? July 4th?
Yes, I think so.
Friday was my public safety and, well, Justice Center Day. I had the opportunity of attending the ribbon cutting for the Jamestown Public Safety and Justice Center, and also the Children's Advocacy Center. They have a nice facility there that's gonna house, uh, Becca Corgi and, uh, healthy families of Allen County, and interviewing rooms for, for their, uh, interviewing children and so forth, but a beautiful, beautiful facility. If you ever have the opportunity, uh, you're driving down past the Long House, uh, gas station there, it's right behind you in the fire station, but it's just top-notch, well done. My congratulations to Ron Allen and his, his folks down there, it's just a, a beautiful facility. The dedication was, uh, was, again, first-class, the only thing, uh, Mark, you'll appreciate this, uh, because of the ambassadors. Uh, Ron had this scissors that he was gonna cut the ribbon with, and apparently they didn't sharpen it that morning.
Squid ambassadors.
So, Mr. Allen to him like this, trying to cut the ribbon, and it wasn't cut, so, uh, anyway, that was, but other than that, it's, again, a beautiful facility, and I urge you all to take the opportunity to go down here and take a tour of it. It's, uh, it's a first-class operation, and again, my congratulations to, uh, the Jamestown tribe and, uh, the, the work they're doing down there. Uh, that evening, I had the opportunity, uh, to do a ride-along with the police department, and actually, it, for me, it's kind of an interesting way, but I couldn't think of any other way to describe it, it was a trifecta. Uh, first of all, I had two ride-alongs, and the first one was with a young officer, and, uh, he looks young. I mean, everybody looks young to me, but I mean, he looked really young, but he's a great, great young man. I had the pleasure of spending about two hours with him. He's the officer that rides along with Amy Miller, and he just bent my ear about this rediscovery program, and I was fascinated to learn about it from his perspective, and they're doing a great job, and he is super enthusiastic about it, and, uh, he, he's a, he's been a police officer with Fort Angeles for about a year and a half, he started in December of seventeen, uh, when he was, I, I guess, about, what, gee, four years old? So, uh, anyway, no, he's a great young man, he just looks like he hasn't changed yet. So, but I, I think, I would not want to, uh, to, to cross his path, but, the interesting thing, second part of that was, uh, while we were talking, we got a, a call, and, uh, what happened was a, a young lady was tossed out of a speeding truck and landed on, uh, the street, and she was very severely injured, and we were the first patrol car on the scene, and so, Officer, um, Jackson, his, first name is Jackson, his van, van used it, and he jumped out, took control, and right after that, couldn't do it within three or four minutes, Terry and his paramedics showed up, and so I, I saw the, the, the second part of the evening develop, and that was the amazing work that our paramedics, EMTs, do. They got this young lady stabilized, under control, uh, got her, uh, bandaged up, and, uh, you know, I, I flew medevac missions in Vietnam, you never get used to seeing that type of, uh, traumatic injury to people, um, but they handled it with professional care, um, and, uh, and were able to stabilize her and transfer her to the hospital, and so I hope, uh, I hope she recovers, but, uh, she was pretty, pretty banged up, but to see our quiet professionals in action and the teamwork there between the police department and the fire department at that particular scene was amazing. It was choreographed, the street was blocked, you know, it was like nobody had to say anything, they knew exactly what to do, uh, and so, uh, second part of the evening was devoted to, uh, Mr. Mike Johnson, and if you haven't had the opportunity to meet Mike, uh, it's an opportunity that I wish you would take. Uh, Mike is just an amazing, amazing individual. I spent four hours with Mike, and we, we toured, uh, Fort Angeles over and over again. He, uh, he kept calling it, uh, welfare checks, and we had, uh, homeless people and people that were in distress, and his handling of those situations and his professionalism and his kindness to these, these people that were on the streets, and this is ten, eleven, twelve o'clock at night, uh, was, was something to behold, and, uh, his personality is, is bigger than he is, and that's hard, because he's about six, six, three hundred and eighty pounds, uh, me sitting next to him, and, uh, wonderful, he, he just was, uh, was handling the situation as well. Uh, we did, uh, transported a couple of people to the serenity house for, for their protection for the night, and so, but his, and he kept calling them welfare checks, and at first I thought he was talking about something in the mail, it was, uh, it was, uh, checking on these individuals, and the way he handled those people with respect, with dignity, and they all know who he was, and, uh, I, I can't tell you how impressed I was with the work that, that Mike did. He's a wonderful, wonderful police officer, he's a training officer, he's been with the force about thirteen years, and, uh, oh, did I tell you he had one arm? Amazing police officer, and it was a privilege to see all aspects of our public safety service at work on Friday night, and again, thank you for your service, Chief, uh, the Fire Department, Chief of the Police Department.
Thank you for that. Um, and, uh, I guess for my report, um, I attended the MSRC meeting that happened, um, I guess it was just yesterday, um, and so we've got a couple of new interns that are gonna be working with us, we have a, they, I'm gonna go ahead and recommend the Kelp Beds around the area, and, um, they, they do also this crabber, uh, information thing, they go out there, they collect the crab pots that are derelict, the derelict crab pots that are currently still collecting crabs, and, um, the crabs get, go into the pot, they get stuck there because the crab pots are abandoned, basically, and so then the next crab goes in there, and, you know, it catches a lot of crabs, and then they end up eating each other, so they're, I mean, it's just, it's pretty awful, you lose a ton of crabs that way, and so, um, so they do collect derelict crab pots, they also teach people how not to lose their crab pots, and then, um, the other thing that they, we had a presentation on the wellness decision-making tools, which is something that, um, coincided with my meeting with DC, talking about the human aspect of some of the science, the collecting of science, and how we're making decisions, so taking science and really combining it with the human element to make sure that you have action-oriented science and decision-making processes that are, um, well, informed. So then. you have action oriented science and decision making processes that are well informed. So then, so I was in DC all last week, I had, I met with all our representatives out there, they are tracking, we are looking to getting some of the funding for our waste, for our water, industrial water line, and so that is still in the budget, hopefully it will continue to be there, and hopefully we will receive that if the budget gets passed. So that's all going on. And then, the other reason I was there was for, the NSF put together a bunch of groups to try to figure out the best, I guess, where the science is gonna go for coastlines and people, and I was grateful to be, I guess, selected to go to that, and we did that last October in San Diego, 100 white papers were written out of that, so they brought 12 of us together to try to condense all those 100 papers into one, so now we've got homework until September. But it was a really interesting meeting, and it's interesting, so the issue is that there's this great science, and scientists are great at doing that, but we policymakers don't get that science, because we're not, we don't even have access to the databases necessarily. And then there's that translation, so they need to write papers, and they put a nugget of information in each paper, so putting all that information that's useful for policymakers doesn't really happen. There's a list of the folks from the CBRAND that, so Ian Miller is from the CBRAND folks that try to do some of that, but he's also still doing science, so we don't get the chance to really have that. So NSF, the National Science Foundation, is trying to figure out how to best do this. So it's a really kind of an interesting problem, so we'll see how, what happens come September, it's rolling to turn the paper in. And then, yeah, July 4th, I know it's happening, hopefully we'll be out there playing Big Ball as well, so, yes.
Fire Department and Police Department are going to have a contest for who makes the best map reply.
I hope that I can just do that. Okay, I tried last time, I was in such a hurry, didn't quite make all the way. This time, oh, definitely, gonna make all the way. All right, lodging tax, lodging tax, our lodging tax meeting, committee met also with the county, and working forward to getting a RFP so that we can start someone to come in and help create the master plan for the lodging tax committee. So that is on its way. And that is the end of my report. So we are at 6:30, perfect time for the public hearing, it begins at 7:30, and this is on the 2020 to 2025 capital facilities plan and transportation improvement. Stan, who's gonna take that?
Mayor and Council, I'm gonna take that this evening. We're excited to be at the second reading of the capital facilities plan, and I did miss the meeting on June 4th, and I understand there was some great conversation there, I did go back and listen to the tape, so I've had the benefit of hearing some of that discussion. And we wanna take the time tonight to follow up to some of the comments and discussion that was had at that meeting. We do have a specific presentation for you tonight on some of the questions and details that were raised during that meeting, and there's gonna be multiple staff members that are walking us through some of those details. But I think it's important to provide just the additional background, we do need to have this document completed by June 30th. I think it's important to share too, though, we can go back and amend the capital facilities plan throughout the year if we need to do that. So I think from the perspective of, there were a number of questions brought up, there's probably some unresolved issues and answers, there's more time to have that discussion. I think it's great that we saw good community participation at the last meeting, and ultimately we have an opportunity to continue that discussion with the community. So when you look at what came up at that meeting, I think one of the, let's try to move this actually gets some forward movement. So at that meeting, there were a number of questions about the waterfront redevelopment project, which is TR 01-13, also a railroad avenue paving project, which is TR 08-18, a downtown plan, which is TR 02-19, and a city pier project, which is PK 0319. At this time, as they are seen in the plan that's been presented to council, funding hasn't been committed to those projects, nor have those projects been made active, which means resources haven't been specifically committed to either design or construction. That doesn't mean that other resources haven't been contributed to those projects, because in some cases they have, in some cases we have substantial conceptual work on those projects, and those projects are all extremely important to city staff, as I know they are to city council as well. Looking ahead, I think it's important to share why the waterfront redevelopment project isn't specifically funded or listed in the capital facilities plan as an active project currently, and I think the number one issue is capacity. If you take it back to 2011, when we started the waterfront development project, we wanted to build in all of those various capital projects that were provided to us by American Institute of Architects as part of the Sustainable Design Assessment Team, and that was probably over 11 different capital projects that we actually combined to get some efficiencies and make it easy for us to move forward. But what we've been doing ever since we received those plans and put together some of those concepts, is we've really gone after grants for all of those projects, and when we've actually achieved and received a grant on those projects, we've actually made it happen and we've moved forward with it. So I think predominantly, the fact that we've actually received grants on projects like the Ray Street project, on the signage and wave finding project, that's why you see us moving forward with those. It's important to note that we have applied for grants on the next and third, fourth, fifth phases of the waterfront project, and we'll talk about that in a second, we have applied for grants, we just haven't been successful yet to receive them, and I think that's gonna be helpful moving forward when we do actually see some grants. I think it's important to note too, with the remainder of the waterfront project, one of the strategic reasons why we moved forward with the west end of Railroad Avenue, is that we had a number of unresolved situations on the east end of Railroad Avenue. One of them was that Blackball was in the process of looking at a new terminal, trying to figure out how they could plan that, make it work, and we wanted to make sure, considering the economic driver that Blackball Ferry and the COBO is in our downtown, we wanted to make sure we were supportive of them, and we helped them out relative to the path that we moved forward on. In particular, I think one of the challenges that they're seeing today is there's a lack of predictability at the federal level, both Canadian and US, as to where immigration and customs clearance is going to take place, whether it's on our side of the border or the Canadian side of the border. I don't pretend to know all those details or to follow that legislation in detail, but it's an unresolved issue, it's a significant matter when you're designing a roadway and potentially making changes to it, so I think that's important. I think too, when you think about the costs of Railroad Avenue, and we experienced those direct costs in the waterfront project on the west side of Railroad Avenue. Specifically, what we encountered is the fact that we have concrete panels that were laid over where the railroad trestle used to be, keep in mind, it's fill, there's a trestle structure underneath there, so ultimately, what we need to do from a cost perspective is we have to remove several concrete panels and then excavate out the old trestle structure, which ultimately is deteriorating, it doesn't grab well, it crumbles when you grab it with an excavator, it is not a cheap endeavor to remove that, and ultimately, moving forward with the permanent project, that's something that we would need to do with the Railroad Avenue portion. I think too, as a general principle, we're always aware of other construction going on, and I think it's important that if we put a branded roadway and we don't want construction vehicles and traffic basically impacting that road or modifying that road, so I think it's important, again, we've got the Lower Ala Drive working on a hotel, where we've got the landing mall where we anticipate substantial renovations, we've got the Red Lion where we anticipate multimillion dollar renovations, again, Blackball Terminal, and then we have a number of other investments taking place along Railroad Avenue, along Oak, and we're really excited about the investments that some of the business owners are making in those areas, we wanna be respectful of that, but we also wanna time it right. And that doesn't mean we have to wait for all of these projects to move forward, there may not be a perfect time, but it's definitely something that we wanna think about moving forward. I think too, part of what is conceived as Phase 3 is also NOAA and FARO, they have an existing building in what is referred to as Phase 3 of the waterfront right now, and if they're planning on moving forward with the new design, potentially starting construction in a few years, we wanna make sure that we're updating and doing something that's lasting, and give them an opportunity to relocate, design their new facility before we move forward. So I wanted to give back to the community and to council just a reminder of what the conceptual development was like. The waterfront redevelopment, as it was envisioned, went from Valley Creek Estuary all the way to Hollywood Beach, and incorporated numerous projects along the way. Probably most important to our funding element is the fact that we broke it up into at least 11 different phases of the project, so that as grant funding becomes available, we have multiple ways that we can arrange and divide the project to move forward with it successfully, and I think that's really important. So while we refer in the capital facilities plan to the next step as Phase 3, we have done some Phase 3 grant applications that apply just to Railroad Avenue, might be transportation grants, we've done just park grants related to the city pier area that help us with Phase 3. So ultimately, Phase 3 isn't truly defined at this time, and we have a lot of flexibility of what that looks like at the end of the day. Another point that I wanted to talk about was in 2016, there was a renewed visioning for the waterfront project that was done in coordination with NOAA and FARO Marine Life Center, and as part of that visioning, one of the focus points was that the city pier improvements could be really expensive, and what can we do differently that might not be so expensive? And one of the concepts that was created by a local consultant was the light touch approach. And ultimately, I'm gonna ask Director Delacotte to jump into this a little bit, but ultimately, what we've been doing is we've actually been slowly moving forward with the light touch approach for the city pier area. It's more of a renovation to the area rather than overhaul of the entire area, complete redevelopment of city pier, but there's a number of opportunities there that are probably more cost effective and efficient. So I'm gonna turn it over to Corey for the next couple of slides, so he can talk about some of the work we've done on city pier.
Good evening, Council. So this year, one thing that we wanna do is kinda stress the infrastructure at the city pier. As we were finishing up some of the improvements at city, at city field, we wanted to go, okay, what's the next facility we need to start working on, and that's the city pier. So in 2015, we were awarded a boarding infrastructure grant in the amount of $280,000. So we went out to bid to replace the city pier floors, the bids came in a lot lower than we thought the project was gonna be, it came in around $195,000. So what we were able to do is get an additional floor that we didn't think we were gonna be able to afford in the project, and improve some EDA access by replacing a 40 foot ramp with an 80 foot ramp. And so those are some things we started doing. Since we had some additional funding, we also wanted to look at, okay, what's it gonna take to look at the existing infrastructure of the city pier? So we hired Sergeant Engineering to do an assessment for us, it really looked at the pilings, the decking, and also the railing at the city pier. And so we have one project listed in the CFP, but recently we kinda broke it up into two, and one was for the decking and the piling, and one was for the city pier reinforcement. So once we got the load rating and assessment done, we asked for the cost, and so the cost for the repaired infrastructure of the city pier came in around an estimation between $600,000 and $700,000. We kinda wanted a separation, because we really wanted to look at the railing, because we know that it desperately needs to be repaired, and not only did the Sergeant Engineering come in around $150,000, I asked around for some businesses to get more of a defined quote, and we could probably get materials to replace the railing for about $165,000, and I feel that's a project that we could probably installment house.
So Council, one of the other projects that was identified at the last meeting that we wanted to talk about was the Railroad Avenue overlay, and this is a project that was actually introduced to the capital facilities plan, recognizing that we may actually not get to waterfront Phase 3 or the various components of it in the near, near future, and should Council desire to move forward with a paving overlay in the meantime, that's something that we wanted to have available in the capital facilities plan. It's a challenging one, though, when you look at all our overall transportation needs. I think it's important to recognize that it's a temporary fix, it's one that ultimately we put paving down, and we'd have to remove it when it's time to actually do the permanent project, remove the concrete slabs in the right of way, and ultimately, it competes with those other roadway projects, which we know in many cases are arterials that are currently failing. I think too, it's important that as part of that project, the state's gonna require that we incorporate and reconstruct all of the ADA access points, which also will add cost to that project, but bottom line is, that's about a $200,000 project at this point in time. Another discussion point that came up was, could we have Railroad Avenue become that much more eligible for funding if it became an arterial street? And I think it's important, we actually looked back at that to see, because to me, that makes sense, and I think to staff generally, that makes sense, recognizing the function and the critical nature of the ferry, how the transportation system works. In city code, essentially, we have three levels of arterial, the minor arterial being the smallest of those arterials, or the arterial takes utilizing the less, the least amount of traffic flow. To achieve the status of minor arterial, you need about an average daily traffic count of about 2,500, at the state level, it's actually about an average daily traffic count of about 3,000. And unfortunately, the most recent traffic counts we did, which were at the beginning of the waterfront project, were at about 1,000 average daily trips. So we're not quite there yet. That said, our engineering staff has shared that there are other ways to apply to WashDOT, get some exceptions, and ultimately, still find that it's an arterial street at the end of the day, you can do that. It comes with a federal approval process through WashDOT, and ultimately, we would need to do a study in order to provide that application to the state. I think one of the things we need to be aware of, and I think is important to those businesses in the downtown on Railroad Avenue, on Oak Street, and Lincoln Street, as we're using this route, sometimes arterial streets come with other standard requirements that are typically state driven. That may mean limited access, that may mean limited delivery points, that may mean more restrictions to the roadway, that may not be ultimately what our businesses envisioned for Railroad Avenue area. So I think that's really important to have more of a conversation about, is an arterial standard really what we want there? And I think too, another thing that our city engineers shared is just that collectors can be very eligible for funding too, you don't necessarily have to be at the arterial level to receive state or federal funding for a project. So Council, I'm gonna turn it over to Director Breckie, who's gonna provide a little bit of background on another item that was asked about at the June 4th meeting.
Good evening, Council. So the downtown improvement plan is listed as GG 0219, it was actually previously shown as a project specific to downtown lighting. The city has received just some comments, complaints about how dark it can be downtown, especially at night, we heard that again with the ice skating rink and as a pedestrian crosswalk, so again, during a CFP update time period, we just put in a project there that could be specific to a lighting improvement project, and just created a estimate for that. But then, this year, current year, that went, was expanded to actually include a planning effort, and that is why it's listed as a downtown improvement plan. We've actually determined that it really shouldn't be in the CFP, since it's not a capital project. And please, the next slide, please, Nathan. So the, what is a downtown improvement plan? So again, that typically is a planning effort that occurs to determine what capital projects might be appropriate for a neighborhood, in this case downtown. And so the idea there would be actually to have it as a optional element in our comprehensive plan, it would be a neighborhood plan or a subarea plan, we can call it anything, you see several cities doing this for their downtown areas, and it's something that we can consider, but again, it really shouldn't be a part of the CFP. But again, it really shouldn't be a part of the CFP. We could potentially, you know, reserve a project in the capital facilities project that would be specific to a downtown capital project, whether you want to return to a lighting project or something else. But honestly, the planning effort should occur first, so we can have that community conversation of really what we want to see downtown. I think honestly, the neighborhood plan would be, the great first discussion point would just be asking what are our boundaries of downtown? It's very interesting for me to hear how we don't see the pier as a part of our downtown. And I just wonder why that would be the case. So we just need to have that conversation and really think about how we can have the business needs, the property owner needs in our community wants and needs really addressed in our downtown area. I think we can all agree that our downtown really is the heart of our community, and we need to make sure that it's alive and well, and a planning effort at the neighborhood level could be that way. I will then certainly follow my comments by saying, well, it's a tremendous idea. It is, takes a lot of resources. It would not be something that could be done internally. It would likely bring some outside consultant help to help achieve that. So I think that's just really important. As you will see in the building permit numbers, we continue to see increases there. My staff is very, very busy with current planning projects. And while long-range planning projects are extremely important, they do take tremendous
So council, I want to talk about some alternatives for council consideration. And I brought up capacity earlier, and I think ultimately, if we were to move forward with the waterfront redevelopment project, obviously, we would have to make some funding allocations in the direction of that project. But additionally, we probably want to consider delaying either the Ray Street project or the Olympic Discovery Trail Hill Street project, both of which have substantial grant funding in play right now. And it's not something that staff would recommend at this time, but I think it's really important, as you're looking at that Railroad Avenue area, it's very much about place-making. And I think it's really important that we have part of Allison's staff or Director Breckie's staff involved in the design of that project. And therefore, I don't believe that at this point in time, they have the capacity to really look at what's considered Phase 3 of the waterfront and moving that forward. We do, however, feel that the Parks and Recreation Department has capacity to move forward with the railing install, which is part of the city pier improvements, and would be consistent with some implementation of the Phase 3 project. And that's something that Director Delacot can speak a little bit more to, but ultimately, he feels that's something that we could probably tackle this year and start moving forward with, again, assuming we can move funding in the direction of that project. I think if you look at that Railroad Avenue overlay, again, not something that we're recommending, but recommending, but at this point, we'd want to take something away from another project and reallocate it to Railroad Avenue repaving if we're going to do a paving overlay for that project. And ultimately, that probably would be multiple projects and not just one project at the end of the day, because ultimately, a chip seal project, for example, doesn't really have the design components that it would take to do the ADA access points and the repaving of Railroad Avenue. So I think it's important, too, that we address beyond the waterfront project, beyond Railroad Avenue, and talk about some of these other ones that were brought up in the public hearing. And I think it's really important to mention that these projects have in fact been incorporated in the capital facilities plan. We heard a number of comments about Manham, Port Angeles, View Area, port roadway, and sidewalks in that vicinity. Some of those sidewalks are going to be incorporated in the Ray Street project that was mentioned, but ultimately, those that were not, we're looking at those from a school walk-in route perspective, and we're incorporating a new item in the capital facilities plan, which is TR 0819, to cover those projects. The White's Creek Bridge option has long been part of the capital facilities plan and is part of the alternative crosstown route that's already in the capital facilities So I think one of the things we are most appreciative of is the fact that the Chamber of Commerce came forward and basically said, how can we help? How can we help move these projects forward? And I think it's really important that with the Chamber's assistance, we could probably look at some of the important issues that could help move along some of those Railroad Avenue projects specifically, but also look at available resources and timing information on the area projects. And so specifically, one of the steps that we could take is the Chamber could help us. They asked if there's something that they could do to help. And I think getting a feel for how businesses feel about Railroad Avenue as an arterial roadway, is that really something that our businesses, property owners along those ports want? I would certainly include that segment of Lincoln Street that gets you to Railroad Avenue, as well as the segment of Oak Street, which is really the intended exit for the COO ferry. And really get a feel from those businesses, do we want it to be an arterial street? Do we want it to be more of a pedestrian-friendly street? Where do we want loading, unloading, and access points to be, that type of thing? I think the Chamber could also assist with obtaining estimated timeframes for the multiple projects that we mentioned earlier. As far as those private sector projects that are taking place, what are those timeframes looking like? How can we ensure that these projects in our capital facilities plan are coordinated so that when we see that private sector investment move forward, we're going to match it and we're going to step up and do the right thing on Railroad Avenue at the right time? I think, too, though, we always need to think about utility needs, whether we have derelict infrastructure that's in that roadway, when's the opportune time to replace it? What are the utility needs of the businesses and those making improvements along Railroad Avenue? What are those utility needs so that we can anticipate those in advance and not have a situation where we put in a brand-new Railroad Avenue and we need a crosscut within the next six months to get a utility across the street? So those are some things that we feel the Chamber of Commerce could help with. We encourage them to work with the Port Angeles Downtown Association to get that information. And that concludes our presentation and hope that covers most of those items discussed on June 4.
Council, any questions?
Do have a question, Director Breckie. Welcome back. You raised the point that planning probably necessarily being in the capital facilities plan, because it's not capital, it's not infrastructure. I'm wondering if you're asking us to pull that out, or where are you going to go with that idea? Because I think it's an appropriate idea, too, for talking about crosstown route, whether at Bridge or White's Creek, at Lewis and Boulevard. I believe that is planning process as well. So how do I want to think about those things?
So I'd be happy to address that. Nelson may want to modify what I have to say, but our recommendation is that, in fact, we pull out the downtown plan as a capital facilities plan item. We don't have a capital project associated with it at this time, and I think that would be the best approach. The crosstown route is more of a compilation of actual capital projects that need to be done to potentially get that project in place, and I would encourage us to leave that in there. If we don't leave it in there, we'd end up with several independent capital facilities plan projects like we used to have for each of the key intersections and perhaps bridges or overpasses that we need to complete that project.
So I do agree that it would be great if we can move the rails, the pier. It just dawned on me, would it, would there be any interference with the following work of, I guess, the pilings or whatever?
Pile.
The pilings, yeah. Would installing the rails and then the piling work, would they interfere with each other?
No. And if we took on the railing project, we'd probably start installation, probably fall and carry into the winter time.
Okay. Yeah, because I do know that those rails are a dire need.
Absolutely.
Is there going to be, is it going to be the same design? Or are we looking to something that may be more, you know, cutting the wind and more transparent or?
No. So basically, when I got some estimates, it's, they just basically went off code at what's kind of, we have currently, it's about 1,300 linear feet. And this would probably be more like a hot dipped galvanized, so it wouldn't be painted so that it would last a very long time.
Great. Thank you.
And I would second that, just because I know that that's, the railings have been an issue at a lot of different public, you know, conversations that I've had. And so, you know, I'll just say, personally, earlier, my thinking was, boy, if we're going to do a major redevelopment of a pier, it would be kind of a waste to put new railings on, let's just do it all at once. But I really do think that light touch going forward, you know, we can work toward that redevelopment in a way that's not going to waste efforts along the way. So I think that that's a great idea to make that an active funded project.
Any comments?
It's, it's so important to continue the Ray Street project that is funded. We cannot afford to lose those grant funds, so we need to stay focused on that. So that'll be a big one for the community.
Anything else?
I mean, overall, I really appreciate this entire presentation. It addressed a lot of the things that I think they're asking for addressing. I do think that, you know, now it's on us to do that downtown planning process, because if we don't, then, you know, this private volunteer is going to go forward, and we're not going to be doing our part as far as what's the infrastructure we're going to need, whether it's lighting, whether it's other things. So, you know, that's now, you know, the ball's in our court on that downtown planning process. And I think that we should move forward with it. I do know it's going to be expensive and, you know, it's going to be a lot of work, but we need to do it.
I would agree. I know that the piloting's the first step before we know how to move forward. All right, so let me, I have the...
We have a public hearing.
That's right. Let's open the public hearing. I guess continue from the previous. And so we'll continue the public hearing. So anybody in the audience who would like to talk about this issue, please come forward. State your name. Anybody interested at all in talking about this?
The issue of the railings?
Well, the issue of the capital facilities plan.
I'll say it. Yes. I'm turned on by the city. I don't know why I'm just going to do this. I mean, I was going to talk, and how my daughter would describe what I'm experiencing. Experiencing is a sad. High school students, they're like, oh, I'm doing the sad. So I hear a lot of talk, and I see a lot of action. Sure, there's a lot of positive things going on, but I think, okay, if we pave the rail and then there's a big flood or tsunami, I mean, unlikely, but, and then the homeless people, they get unhoused. I mean, I just, I have a lot of different priorities, and I think the main one that you guys should focus on is how we're going to build the infrastructure, sort of, of the city to actually support our survival, you know, if that makes sense, like, I don't know, your breast cancer and all these things, and I just, I'm like, where's the action? You know, let's actually quit talking.
Mary Smith, Port Angeles. I'm, I'm actually really concerned about the mill, because I'm not hearing enough information. I know our capital facilities whole thing says that we have greater quality, but this is going to be a craft mill. And craft mills do release gaseous sulfur compounds, and it's total reduced sulfur, GRS, which smells like cabbage and raw eggs, rotten eggs. I know that everyone keeps saying that, and I realize that these aren't necessarily dangerous smells, but we're various human beings, we're really good at smelling sulfur. The numbers that are being proposed, from what I've read, sound really low, except, and the numbers probably will be low for most of the time, under most conditions, it'll be mixed with clear air, with clean air, so it won't be all that bad. But we do have a problem all summer in that we have the wind that blows from west to east, which will take an all that...
Port of War, please. What is the...
It does, because I don't think it...
I didn't want to interrupt you, ma'am. I said, Port of War, please.
So she's, she's hopefully talking about capital facilities. It has nothing to do with the budget, so let her finish to make sure that...
There's nothing in this entire document that even talks about what's going to happen with all this development downtown if at the same time, we have a heavy cabbage smell, especially during our hot days of summer, when there's an inversion layer that holds the smell stale. It's not going to help our tourism. It's not going to help our, our economic development, and I don't see that, I think that there is a tie-in, and I think that it is important to discuss, especially now since we're talking about planning. Thank you.
All right. Is anything else in the audience who would like to speak about the capital facilities plan and transportation?
Good evening, Jim McEntire, President of the Chamber of Commerce, and I want to thank the council for your consideration of our recommendations from the previous meeting. And I want to let you know that we are starting that convening process already. We are having a meeting tomorrow, and we have invited the Downtown Association, the Red Lion, Port of Port Angeles, Palm Transit, CoCapellis, Black Ball Ferry, the front of Oak Street, Mr. Dupard and his development, the Downtown Waterfront Center, the Federal Marine Lab, the Marine Sanctuary, McKinley Paper, the North Olympic Healthcare Network, just to name a few of the folks that are going to come and begin to have this conversation. And, and thank you, Nathan, that you put out some ideas about how we can proceed to understand what their timelines and their projects are, but also, we're trying to help find where are topics of collaboration that can all benefit them. So we're committed at the Chamber to continue to do this and to try to figure out, we do agree that there is a sequencing of capital facilities improvements that may happen. We, we agree with that, and I think that's what we can help sort of flesh out with all of those people that are investing and doing great things or planning great things in downtown Port Angeles. So we're going to start tomorrow, and we'll probably report back to you later on. So again, thank you.
Appreciate that. That's wonderful. Yeah, we couldn't, we can't do it alone, guys. We need everybody here.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thanks for holding this hearing. Jim McIntyre, Lubbock County, north of Squim. I'm here tonight as the Chair of the Government Affairs Committee of the Port Angeles Business Association. And I'd like to make specific reference to the Railroad Avenue overlay, TR 0818. Really appreciate the city managers and the city staff's thoughtfulness and obvious care that went into the recommendations and the discussion with you just a few moments ago. So PMBA interest is really to make sure that the spotlight stays on this project, understanding that the greater waterfront development thing may be phased over a period of years, if not decades. There is a fading memory that I have of the regional transportation planning organization's process. In my mind, a city street connecting to an internationally-owned ferry terminal, in other words, a marine segment of the highways, of the international highway system, really is not much different from the state roads that connect to the Washington State ferry terminals. That's just simply an extension of the terrestrial highway network. This is a, this is a unique animal here. It looks, feels, and operates like a state-owned, state-maintained, state-funded transportation facility, but it's an amalgam of publicly-owned, publicly-funded, privately-owned, privately-operated transportation facilities. Might even require some legislation, but it might be worth a phone call from staff to the RTPO to see if perhaps this unique thing here, owned and operated by the port and the city of Port Angeles and a private company, might be eligible in some fashion for state or federal funding assistance in the RTPO planning process, because it's a connector for an international... the RTPO planning process, because it's a connector for an international highway. It's really not much different than the crossing up in Blaine from a transportation conceptual standpoint. So that's an idea that may bear fruit in the future as far as getting you some additional financial resources that can assist to get this thing launched and completed. Thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for that. There's going to be the RTPO meetings on Friday, so that was perfect timing.
Good timing.
Yep. Make sure to bring that up. Anybody else in the audience who would like to speak to the capital facilities and the transportation? Okay, so with that, we will close the public hearing on this, and I'm going to do the second reading of this board of commissioners. So it's a resolution, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, adopting the city's capital facilities plan for 2020 to 2025, which includes the city's transportation improvement program for the years 2020 and 2025.
Would the resolution is ready?
Second. All right, so we have a motion on the table and a second. Any further discussion on this?
Counsel, if I can just provide a point of clarification, sorry to interrupt, but if there's a desire to have the railings incorporated as an active project, as recommended by staff, that's something that you'd want to incorporate as part of your motion.
Okay. Do you want to add that to your motion?
No, that was not part of the motion.
Okay.
So we're voting on a motion without the railings to the pier?
Correct.
To clarify, if we're going to add the railings, we need to take something else out. So if somebody's going to make a motion that includes the railings, please also include what comes out.
Though, from what I understood, that didn't need to have something taken out, because parks had the capacity, was plenty that didn't have the capacity to, and needed, that was taken out. But parks had the capacity to be able to do that.
I'll go ahead and withdraw my motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the 2020-2025 Capital Facilities Plan and Transportation Improvement Plan, including new railings for the city pier.
Second.
Does that work? All right, any further discussion on this?
Yes, so other questions. This also, does this resolution also remove the downtown plan that I didn't want to discuss? It does. Okay.
All right. Anything else?
I just wanted to say thank you to staff for doing a thorough job of answering the questions that came up. I felt after the last meeting, like, the timeframe often doesn't allow for us to incorporate feedback, and so I really appreciate the thorough response to the questions. And I really appreciate the outreach from the community organizations of the chamber, and I appreciate the PABA's suggestions. And it makes it feel much more collaborative, despite the fact that this is a document that belongs to the city but affects everybody. So I appreciate all of those things. I also feel like it was important to me for Manager West to remind us that it is in some ways a living document, and if things change, we can make changes. And that makes me feel much more comfortable going forward, knowing that we have some questions about timeline and that things may change. And so knowing that we're not locked into exactly what this says if something significant happens, I appreciate that.
So this process has gotten a lot better since last year, and so I'm going to vote in favor of it. But we still need to include version, history with the different drafts of the preliminary CFP. We should include a changelog of what are inputs new, what numbers have changed, what's been taken out. We have those completed. So there's a number of items that are going to make it more legible for people who are tracking it year to year, not just city staff, but us in the council and members of the public. So I do look that those things get incorporated next year. I'll vote for it in favor, but even though, you know, the response that city managers provided, I'm not, I didn't know that that is or isn't in there. So we need to have a very clear history of what these preliminary drafts are and what's been changed as we go forward in the adoption process.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay, so we've got a motion on the table and a second. All those who favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously.
And thanks to the chamber for being involved.
Yes, thank you.
And counsel, we'd be happy to provide a summary of those changes to make sure that your input is to exactly the document and the projects that were approved this evening.
Yeah, I made out a request for changelog months ago, I think. So just to clarify that.
All right, so let's move on to the 2019 Amendment of the Comprehensive Plan.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm very excited to introduce to you the second reading and approval of the ordinance for our 2018 Comprehensive Plan Amendment. As you know, I have not been involved with this process the last three months, but I'm very eager to have it in front of me tonight. Just for the benefit of the public, in response to an earlier city council direction to remove internal inconsistencies and eliminate redundancies, and evaluate the definition of policy, CED staff and the Planning Commission reviewed the Comprehensive Plan and drafted amendments as part of this year's 2019 annual amendment cycle. We did also include the changes or proposal that came forward to you last year in 2018. So tonight, the findings of the council, just please note, they are shown as Exhibit A, and the actual document in its entirety, including the appendices, are Exhibit B. And tonight, we are conducting a second reading and recommending second approval of the ordinance as proposed. I have my staff here to answer any questions, as they will be the best to do that.
That's good. So counsel, any questions regarding this? Okay, seeing none, I guess we will open the public hearing for the Comprehensive Plan. So if anybody in the audience who has any questions regarding the amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, now's your time to speak up. All right, I guess seeing none, then we will close the public hearing, and so let me read the ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Port Angeles, Washington, adopting a new amended comprehensive plan. So counsel, how do you want to move forward?
I move that we adopt the ordinance, approve the 2019 Comprehensive Plan Amendment, as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Second. Okay, so we have motion on the table and a second. Any further discussion?
This was a serious undertaking undertaken by both our staff and the Planning Commission. I think that the Planning Commission especially needs to be highlighted in that they had so much direct involvement in drafting these changes, and it was a really extremely thorough look at our comprehensive plan. So thanks to them. I know that they're kind of taking it a couple of months with lighter agendas, and they deserve that. The thing that maybe I would like to, you know, discuss as, what's next, what's our next step going forward? And maybe that's not something we should discuss during this motion, but, you know, we made five motions originally directing them, and, you know, we didn't exactly, they, I think, took them in pieces, and, you know, that's something I think we, as a council, should decide, you know, what is our next step? And I think, is there a next step? Is it an appropriate thing to, you know, we don't necessarily have an amendment every year. And I think that that's reasonable to say, maybe this is the point where we are satisfied with our plan is, and we should talk about an update, you know, going forward and planning for an update rather than, you know, piecing apart. But I really think that the Planning Commission deserves a lot of credit for doing a great job, making a much more readable plan that has a lot less vagueness, a lot less, you know, inconsistencies. And I think this is a really great achievement. So thank you.
Anybody else want to turn in?
Because I do have a comment, because I know we gave the Planning Commission five motions, and they did not address motion number two, which stated that they needed to evaluate the land use map for the map's compatibility with the vision, goals, policies, and objectives stated in the plan. So that was not done at all, and I understand that that's a huge undertaking, but nonetheless, it's actually implementing where we're going. And right now, our current vision looks exactly like our future meeting. I mean, you know, our current state is the same thing as our future. So it's, we're obviously not doing that planning. So as to this work, they've done a really great job. I would like for the Planning Commission to finish the motions that we had established for them. So as their next task to be, to hopefully move that part forward. And I think that that's just, like I said, for this Comprehensive Plan Amendment, as to cleaning up, is great, but I would love for them to push. So, any other comments?
I just responded to that, because I think that was one of the things that was a priority to me in that council meeting of that land use map, because I do agree that our future land use map should not look like our current land use necessarily. Like, that's us saying, hey, all of our land use is perfect, and I don't think that that's true, and I don't think any of us actually believe that. That being said, an amendment cycle should be changing the original intent of the public process that set our comprehensive plan and the update. So that's something that concerns me, that, you know, maybe I was wrong, that that's really an update that needs to happen and not an amendment. Because we shouldn't be changing the original intent of the public process that happened in 2016.
And, I mean, I think, I guess this would be further for discussion, you know, I would think at a future time, but it was something that is not correct in our plan, and it shouldn't stay that. So whether it's an amendment, or an update, or whatever you want to call it, or whatever it really is, it's not right, and we should fix it. So. And I know that with the Climate Action Plan that we are currently working on, there may be some policy additions that we might want to do to our comprehensive plan. So it's a living document. It's meant to continue to change and grow, and I know that there's a huge component with public input, but like I said, it's not right. So we should not settle for it not being right.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, right, and a second. So any further discussion? All those who favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel.
Clarification, Mayor Brook. Are you suggesting that we renew that particular motion, or do you want, did you just comment on it?
You know, I guess I wasn't quite sure how to move it forward, but it is a motion that should pass, and it was not...
Mayor, counsel, can we provide some information on that?
Yes.
I'll start with Director Vraki, and then Mr. Vraki may also have some additional information.
So I would actually argue that the Planning Commission very much considered motion number two. And the tricky thing is, I think it's just a question of what you mean by evaluating. So the task at hand, of course, they were heavily revising elements, goals, and policies. It's difficult to evaluate a land use map to a moving target. So the first step had to be to revise the policies and goals, because that allows you to be able to then look at the land use map and make sure that they are in alignment. There definitely were some comments made by the Planning Commission. If the direction from commission to evaluate really means revise and heavily amend, that is a large undertaking. And you definitely typically see that during an update, because it's very important to involve your community. But again, the Planning Commission did very much include all the motions in their efforts. It just makes sense to them to really make sure the language in the plan itself was at a state that they felt comfortable to do further evaluations. Having said that, we are scheduling a work session with the commission to have them talk about the land use map specifically, its history, and really how it's used in the Comprehensive Plan. And so there is a continuing effort, even in their later agenda months, to keep looking at that.
Okay, and so looking at it and seeing it for, you know, whether the policies fit or not is one thing, but again, I think it's fundamentally broken when our existing zoning plan, our land use plan, is exactly as our future land use plan. So that is, I think, what we were trying to get to, but maybe we just didn't state it as clearly and cleanly as it could be. So I would suggest that maybe we do ask the Planning Commission to take a look at what the current vision is as it meets the Comprehensive Plan goals and what the future map. Because I think, like I said, that is, I think, what's completely broken, is the fact that they're, if you put the maps side to side, they're just, they're basically the same. You know, there might be a tiny little shift here or there, but they're basically the same. So that is the part that we were hoping to get addressed. Knowing that that's a, that maybe that is an update, maybe that is a complete update, it's still important that we fix it. And so whether we begin that conversation, I think it just needs to happen. So I don't know how counsel feels about how we move forward on it. It's going to take a while, but this is, it's the really important conversation as to where our future land development and land use is at. Whether it makes it to the next plan, I mean, we're obviously accepting this, and whether that map continues to evolve in the next four years, along the way as we're, as you continue to think and debate it, then you can add it to the next comprehensive plan a couple of years later down the road. But I don't, I think if we're not having those conversations today, we're not planning for the future.
I get where you're coming from, and I guess my thought is, we want it to look like what the community wants things to look like going forward. And some of what's in the... Let me clarify first with you, if you're saying that you think that some of what's in the comp plan is not reflected accurately in the map. Because if it, if that's the case, that's different than saying, we have a different vision than what that map shows, which I would agree, as a council, many of us do. But I feel like it's not worth taking the time, unless there's a correction based on current language in the comp plan. The map should be done at an update with major community involvement. Because when I reread the comp plan, I did think some of what's in there doesn't coalesce with what I'm hearing from my friends and neighbors. And so I think focusing on when we can accomplish an update, that's, I think that's a better time to build that in. Because I think we want it to look like it should, and the way we're going to get there is by doing an update process, so that we're not tweak, 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 and then we've got this funky thing that doesn't quite jive with any of it.
That's a good clarification.
I'm not sure I agree, and I'm not sure that the Planning Commission agrees with that. So in the Planning Commission Agenda Packet from April 24th, it states, in accordance with motion two, which is what we're discussing, at the regular February 20th, 2019 meeting, the Planning Commission discussed with staff the comprehensive land use map and came up to the conclusion that a proper element to the map would take a considerable amount of time and public involvement. The commission came to the agreement that although an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan land use map is all overdue, to be done correctly, it should be advocated during a future amendment cycle.
So it's an amendment rather than an update?
That says during a future amendment cycle.
I don't have a problem with that.
Right. And so that amendment cycle could be every, I mean, I guess...
It could be 2021, it could be 2022, it could be 2021.
I will bring up the point that an update can happen earlier, too.
Yes.
So I will continue to bring that update, because an amendment to the land use map is a huge undertaking, and I think it's very fair to the community to be heavily involved with that. Knowing about the number of community members that attended our planning commission meetings as we're talking about the Comprehensive Plan, it was, it was very little. So I just, as you're talking about changing how a property develops in the future, that's a very important conversation to have at the community level, and it will be a huge undertaking. And whether the council wishes to direct us to do that during amendment cycle, just, you know, we have to think about what else is happening with state mandates, state mandated updates, including our shoreline management plan, which is due June of 2020. I think it's just important to keep it all in alignment. Also, I lost my thought, which happens with lack of sleep, but it is a really important undertaking to have that community conversation. I say that often, and the map can certainly be a part of that. I would argue that it's not broken. There's definitely some flexibility to the land use map right now that's not depicted in our zoning. So we have to just keep those two realities separate. And that's come up in past discussion with the buffers. So I, I think the planning commission certainly is going to talk more about this. And I apologize, I don't have the history of that, or comment from a past planning commission meeting, so I don't have that history. But I know they are going to be looking at it again, and I'd be welcome to just have council, you know, give through a direction of what they hope that evaluation of a land use map would look like.
So I appreciate that. One other, you know, thing that I think, one of the reasons I brought this up, I think there are a lot of other things and a lot of other policy areas where we could direct the Planning Commission to go. And they have a limited amount of time. As we say, the future land use map, major changes to it are a large undertaking that ideally would be done during an update process. I think Kate made a really good distinction of, are we saying that the future land use map doesn't agree with the comprehensive plan? Or are we saying it doesn't agree with our council vision? And if it doesn't agree with our council vision, we should not amend it. We should update it. And, you know, again, the community makes a comprehensive plan out of the council. So and I don't, I don't think anyone is saying, I don't know, I'm trying to put words in anyone's mouth. But what I see is there are plenty of changes to municipal code and the zoning code that would fit both our future land use map as it is now and our amended comprehensive plan that I am interested in having the Planning Commission work through. So I'm not interested in them spending an hard amount of time doing an amendment to the future land use map that's not going to be, you know, as impactful as I think these other changes could be. That's where I'm at. But I'm totally, I'm sorry.
No, I was going to say, so I appreciate the prioritizing of the planning mission jobs and tasks. And I think that that's part of some of the think tank discussion. So I, so I can leave it at that. I just do feel like, you know, we all were appalled to know that our existing and our proposed look the same. And that I still don't believe is, you know, correct. Now, given all that, the fact that it is such a much better plan, it's actually legible, it's clean, and it's got measurables, and we'll be able to at least follow through some of that, I really appreciate that. So and knowing that this is something that, you know, I've been harking around for eight years, I am grateful to finally see that, even though that other part's not fixed. But nevertheless, I'm happy to live with this. So.
And the other part I make is unraveling suburban sprawl is something that no one has really figured out yet. And it's going to be a long process and it's going to be difficult. So, yeah.
So, yeah, I would say I will, we can continue this during the think tank because I think it would fit there as to setting priorities for some of the things. But, but yeah, so motion number two is something that I still believe that we should ask, you know, the planning commission to just review because it wasn't finished.
So did we give staff any help during that conversation?
Council is always helpful.
You're still sharp, Allison. You still got it.
No, I'm welcome and I will certainly just, you know, have my staff just, the think tank, I believe, is later on on this agenda, so we can talk about it at that point. But I, it's just, again, you're going to hear the reality of it's a big undertaking. I definitely agree that it's something that we can look at in the near future. I think it's important to keep in mind as well, though we are talking about some really exciting code updates, zoning code updates, and let's not keep, let's, remember, we have to have that difficult balance sometimes with, with implementation and the planning process. So I'm hearing a lot from council about that we want to actually get to implementation. We want to start changing code. And that's, that's really important. It takes time. And we have to tie it back to the comprehensive plan. So when you change a comprehensive plan too much, you know, you might have to redo your code again. It's just all related. And I'm happy to hear what council would like to direct us to do.
So I guess the point of clarification was, is motion two still outstanding or does, is it wrapped up? And in.
The planning commission has a meeting scheduled, correct? That's still on the table.
It's a work session to look at the land use map, discuss the history, and I'm more than welcome to have Dave Seppen to talk about what that looks like. But again, and I apologize, I do not know about the details of that April 24th meeting, but the meetings I attended, there certainly was a lot of discussion and a part of their motion in minutes just saying how they felt like motion two was addressed. You know, they did, they did look at it in terms of, was there a big disconnect between our current language in the plan and the land use map? And their determination was that there was not. Now, is it a future effort to look at in addition? Yes. Should it be an amendment or update? Well, you know, the word amendment, I think, was used in many different ways. I think sometimes my commission members would say amendment when they meant update. And sometimes we'd say update when we meant amendment. So, but we can certainly look at it. They're going to learn more about it at a future work session. The public is invited.
I move to request clarification from the Planning Commission as to the status of motion two from the council last year.
We've got a motion on the table, two more, we have a second. All right. So we do, we do not have a second?
I'll second.
You can always use a second for a single argument.
All right, so we have a motion on the table and a second.
That would be a good reason, sorry if you want to speak to your motion.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just say, I made this motion because it's not clear to me what the planning commission has actually determined as to this request of the council. And so I'd like to hear directly from the planning commission. That's why I made the motion.
I think a good result from that work session would be, what does the planning commission believe about that motion and the future land use map? And if they come back to us and say, we are not moving forward with an amendment at this point, that is a reasonable outcome and it's clear.
And I would say that this motion makes the world of sense, especially after they have their meeting, they will have addressed it and they will have come forward to a conclusion that addresses this motion. So.
Is that clear? That, does that make sense to you? Do you hear that in the motion that basically this motion is saying, can you please report back to us after the work session on the status of the planning commission regarding the map or their opinion about it?
I would imagine that's just going to be coming through their minutes on record as their recommendation. And so.
But this gets reported to council now, just as.
So just so staff's clear, so they will be providing further.
Just clarification.
Clarification of how they addressed motion number two.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I've heard it needs to be done in amendment. I've heard it needs to be done in an update. I've heard they think it's sorted. I just want to hear the effort from the planning commission.
And again, the word is evaluate the land use map, correct? Not amend or revise the land use map? Because the motion was evaluate the land use map.
Right, for compatibility.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion on the table and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Jim, did you have a comment?
No, I just find this motion superfluous and unnecessary. We vote no.
Did I?
Do you know the answer to this question already? Is that one?
Still your business. I mean, that's not the question where it should be asked.
Counsel, I just, I just want to take the opportunity to hear from Mr. Brackner as to what the latest discussion with the planning commission was about this matter. If that clears it up, great. If it doesn't, then we'll continue.
I do need to summarize what we're hoping to accomplish in the next few months. The planning commission, having gone through the trials and tribulations, let's call it, of amending the comprehensive plan, they did a lot of work. And I think through that experience, they've learned more in depth what the community of the comp plan is, how it's organized, and how they want to move forward. We've got a lot of code work that the staff wants to do in response to administrative and structural issues in the code over the next few months. We're also blending that with some informative sessions for the planning commission in work sessions, one of which is the first work session in July, where we will be discussing the amendments or possible amendments to the land use map. There will also be discussions about housing, parking, signage, and other work session items, which will then blend into a work plan. And what I would suggest is that we provide a council at some future date, not too far in the future, an amended or annotated work plan. It says what the planning commission would like to see as a work plan for the upcoming year or either two years, and then annotations of each of those items, which the council can help them prioritize. But to give you some background on each one of the items, how they see that moving forward, and perhaps some timelines associated.
That sounds great.
Sounds good. So, and Jim, I'd like to just make a comment. Please, you know, respond kindly.
I think that was an inappropriate question. And so if inappropriate questions are asked, they need to be answered in kind. So please, if an inappropriate question is asked, you cut it off.
Okay.
It's point of order is the mechanism for requesting the mayor to cut something off. So council members, if you feel like, I have been the number three, to say point of order decorum or whatever you want to say, that point of order is the operative word there.
Point of order, reminding the chair that one council member may not interrogate another council member.
All right, guys, let's get a little, let's get.
I'm not really sure that that's actually a point of order. I think it's.
I'm sure it is.
I think it's.
Madam Mayor, you're running the meeting.
I. Guys, please.
So I have a perfectly clear opinion that a council member shall not interrupt another council member when they're speaking. That would be a.
Okay, folks, folks, please, let's move forward.
Call for the question.
Thank you. We will call the question. We have a motion on the table and a second. So.
No, I second the call for the question. We need to vote on call the question.
Oh, we're calling the question. So, so we have a motion on the table and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye, to calling the question.
Okay. All those against calling the question, please say nay. That's wrong. All those not in favor of the motion, say nay. Okay, so calling the question passes. So now we will vote question. So the question is to have a clarification on motion number two. All right, all those in favor of that motion, please say aye. All ayes. All those not in favor of the motion, say nay.
Nay.
So we have four nays and three yeses. So the question, so the motion fails. All right, let's move forward. Actually, you know what? We are going to take five, you know, five minute break, and then we'll go move into the think tank.
All right, folks, I think we got everybody here, so let's start the think tank. I know the first item on there is the Charter for Compassion Ideas. So actually, it's the, what you have on your dais are the first five steps out of the 12 steps that are, that were written by Karen Armstrong. And one of the things about this compassion charter thing is that I know the county is looking at that, and I know the other cities are looking at that as well. And one of the things I'd like to ask you is, how do you see this potentially moving forward? They're going to try to bring the charter for us to sign. I believe it's probably going to be, I don't know if it's September, October, November, but I know it's coming. So what is it that you guys might need to understand the Charter of Compassion better to be able to feel like you could support this or not support this?
I feel like this is a good step, and we've talked about it a little bit. I have some, I have other people who've been participating, so I know some of, something about it, not a lot. And I haven't been able to participate in some of the group stuff, but I feel like this is a good starting point in bringing us the information to look over. And if you could suggest the title of the book that this is, it's based on a book, isn't it?
Right, it is, The 12 Steps to a Compassionate Life.
That's the name, okay.
By Karen Armstrong.
We could look that up.
Yeah, and these are the first five steps. So I will bring the six to 12 the next time. And it just basically is, you know, living by the golden rule. You know, don't do to others what you wouldn't want them happen to you. Right? So treat everybody kindly and gently and, you know, be forgiving because we all make mistakes. And so, and doing it for yourself, doing it for others, and making sure that we have a compassionate place for the staff, that we treat staff with respect, to understand their, you know. So it's looking at yourself, looking at outside, and looking further outside. So, but if, but like I said, cities have been adopting the Charter for Compassion. The county is looking to do that. So I just wanted to ask council here, what, what would you, what more would you like to see?
So I've seen this come on here more than one occasion. I'm confused as exactly what this is supposed to be, just some kind of a letter that, that we're signing as a city council? Because I find this one of those feel-good things. This is one of those things that as a city, we just sign on and say, well, nobody's going to speak badly of it because you're going to look like an ass. And that's fine. I'm not in favor of spending the time on this, simply based on, I have a hard time understanding, if you are somebody that's not going to follow any level of this, you are probably somebody that isn't going to care whether it's written on a piece of paper or inscribed on a wall. So, you know, there's so many levels of lack of compassion. It comes in all, it comes in all steps. I mean, there are those, I'm sure that are, compassion is over the roof for folks, for different, for different areas or different genres. And as a general rule, I have a hard time getting my head around that society would live by something other than this. And having to come forward with, and I'm, I'm not understanding, like I say, is it supposed to be an ordinance? Is this supposed to be some type of council rules and procedures? Or exactly what, what we're looking at here? And right now, I, every time it comes up, there isn't much traction on it. I kind of hear a little snippet about it and then we move on to the next think tank item. And I've never quite heard what the point of this whole thing is, other than the basic premise of not bullying, having compassion for others, you know. It's, it's like, the state comes up with laws, laws that govern society. We seem to have jails that are plentiful. We seem to have officers that have no lack of things to do. So with this, I kind of look at this the same thing. It's like, there are those that could give to some things less about what this says. And then there are those that could simply say, you know what? Well, that's, that's a great thing that, you know, people are aware that this is occurring. And so right now, I'm kind of, I'm kind of on the dumper of, I'm not really behind it. I'm just, it's, it's a feel-good thing that I'm not sure what it's even supposed to look like.
So the last time we had, so we've had two versions of what this charter looks like, right? And so, because it's still being modified as the county, you know, talks about it, as the people that attend some of these meetings talk about it and saying, okay, what should it look like? So it is strange that we have to talk about it because we sometimes don't live by that golden rule. We don't treat people as kindly as we should. And it goes to treating people kindly in your own family, it treats in your own neighborhood, in your work, in the city, in this meeting right here. So the idea is that we actually become a little more mindful because we have not been talking about it. We have not been behaving in some places as we should, as, that follows some of these things that you say, you know, this is pretty common sense. In some ways, you really need to be kind. You really need to be, you really should want to treat others like you want to be treated. And so our. And so are our city policies really mindful of that? And that's, I think, what the charter is asking the world, is, because this is a worldwide movement right now. Are we actually living by what we believe? And just all sorts of different countries and philosophies, they believe that, you know, you should really, you know, that golden rule is written in so many different words for so many different cultures. And you would think that we should all live that way, but we're not doing that. So being mindful of it and stating it, that, look, we live by this golden rule, may make us more aware of what our policies should be, and the fact that we should actually, you know, if we're going to put a parking policy, is it actually living by the golden rule? Are we, you know, being mindful and being aware of these things, it's just a reminder, and saying that, yes, the city believes in some of this.
So my question is, is this an ordinance, a policy?
So it's a little charter. So it'll be, you know, it'll state, and I didn't bring it with me, I will bring it next time. Yeah, so it's a, it could be a resolution type, that we adopt the charter. So, so next time, I'll bring the charter so that it's clear what it would be looking like.
And what it would say?
Anyway, exactly.
Are we still waiting on the county to decide for us what it should say?
We have one that, that's pretty final, but we get to also change it to what we need it to be. So, so the next time, we'll bring it up and then put the final wording for us. How's that?
So I'm kind of where Michael Meredith is on this, that, you know, when I list the things that I care about in city council, you know, policy is towards the top, getting the nuts and bolts, and this kind of thing is toward the bottom. So I don't have an objection to it, it's just not something that I care deeply about and want to prioritize and want to spend time on. And I do have, you know, you know, this little inkling in the back of my mind that there are separated church and state concerns, in that Karen Armstrong herself is a explicitly Christian person, and that's something that, in various things that I've read on this, occur to me that, you know, government should be secular, not religious. So, yeah, that, that sums up where I'm at. I just don't have specific objections, but I also don't think that, you know, and this is a word that people use callously most of the time when they say it, but this seems to me more like virtue signaling, where we're saying, these are our values, and we want to show people that we have these values so that they can think better of us. And, and I understand that's not what you're saying. You're saying, no, we want this to influence our policy. I just think that we interact with policy to do that.
Right. And I understand about that secular part, because it, there will be no religious words on it, and the golden rule is not religious. So, you know, so from that separation of church and state, there is...
I think spirituality is a religious concept. And so mindfulness, these things are blurry, and the, you know, so I'm not saying I have a problem, I just think that I have, it's a, it's a red flag in my head.
Okay. That's valid.
In response to Councilmember French, I addressed some of those concerns, and out of that, we got the February 19th version of this, which I believe came from a school, and in my reading of it, takes out the, the words that suggest religious overtones, which I agree that we as a city shouldn't specifically adopt. At a time like this, I think it is important that we do virtue signal, for lack of a better word. I mean, the statement from February said, "We recognize that intolerance and hatred cause suffering, and that when we stand by doing nothing, or laugh, or post comments online when others bully," again, this one came from a school, "we contribute to the problem. So we pledge to stand up to bullying and make this a city where everyone belongs." I mean, we, we hear from our constituents that some people don't believe everyone belongs here. And it's important that we reiterate that, no, this is a city for everyone who's here.
So I guess, so for the next time, like I said, I'll bring the, the next finalized charter, and then the last of the steps, just to hopefully broaden and give you guys all the information, and then, but I know we will be asked to vote on that in the future. So, okay. So the, the next thing is the advisory board discussions. And this is one of those things that was one of those aha moments for me, and I know it should have been, it was one of those duh moments, more likely. But we do have, like the Planning Commission, we do have the Parks Beautification, the UAC, those are committees, they're advisory to us. And most of the time, we just get advice as the things that they're working on, but it's not something that we task them to do. We don't, we haven't, except for the Planning Commission with the plan, with the comprehensive plan, we really haven't tasked our Parks and Beautification to do something for us, or to look at different things. We haven't tasked, you know, I feel like we get information, but we, but we as a council could be using those committees in a much better way. My conversation with Mr. Blor kind of highlighted, it's like, ah, that's how we could get some in from, some of those things. There's, there's a lot of volunteers that would love to give us more feedback and do a little more work. So I guess what I'm asking here is for us to think about, how else, or how better can we use our advisory committees?
And I think that comprehensive plan process shows how effective that can be, because I think the Planning Commission was extremely effective, and we got a good product, because, and they jumped into that, you know, work somewhat eagerly, it seems, I'm surprised, but...
Yes. No, and I, I think the work that came out of it was wonderful. So, and, so like I said, the issue with the bell, right? I mean, that was something that kind of happened there, and we didn't task them to do that, but did we task for other potentially options, or, you know? Like I said, I just feel like we're not using our advisory committees as well. I know, I had a conversation with one of our, with one of the folks that was here earlier, and she was saying that there used to be a ton of committees, and there was almost too many committees, but they had a lot of different committees on different things. And so, so they got, they made those committees work for them. And I guess what I'm thinking is, I know that we scaled down on committees because of the number of meetings people were going to, and maybe, maybe we scale them too much, or, or maybe some of these committees can be just topic-specific. But I just feel like, as a council, I think we can do a better use of some of that, so...
Well, I would just jump in, that the thing that's on my mind is development regulations. This is something that other council members have spoken to. I do think that, you know, in my conception of how cities should work, and I think that the Growth Management Act applies here, is that in rural areas, there should be a lot of restrictions on development, and in cities, there should be few. And we seem to have the opposite approach in many ways. And so I would love to see what development regulations are under our control, are, you know, what is, you know, and that's something I think the Planning Commission could look at. And the first one that comes to mind, we've talked about it at council level, is parking restrictions with regards to, you know, new development, and, you know, certain, in certain cases, redevelopment. We have parking minimums as a requirement, and that increases development costs in many ways. And so, you know, that's, that's the first thing that comes to my mind.
Yeah. The parking regs, yep. Any other input from anybody else?
Well, there's two concepts that come to mind in, in how we think about policymaking with a bunch of advisory committees, and one is death by committee, and the other is analysis paralysis. And I don't think we should do either, but I'm worried that in many ways, we are kind of trapped in, in those processes. So my concern is, how do we create a streamlined process, and yet a thorough process, so that we can make requests to our advisory committees, they can, within a reasonable amount of time, respond to those requests with their advice as to whether or not a policy suggestion is something we should move forward with, and then we can, within a reasonable amount of time, act on it. I don't think we really have that process down, and so I'm more concerned about the process of how we interact effectively and, and cleanly, to some extent procedurally speaking, with the advisory committees.
And I think that's really valid. I don't know if staff can help us on this. What would be the best way? Because I keep thinking, maybe, once a year, we sit down, and we, maybe we have a list for each advisory committee of what it is that we want, and then they can put it in throughout the year as their, as, you know, their other work allows as well. But this way, we've given them guidance on what we want them to work on. So maybe that's one thing to start thinking about in the future. I don't know. Is there any other way that you see it, Nathan?
Well, council, I think it's, it's a challenging thing, and I think it really, from my perspective, goes back to the council's strategic plan, and it's thinking about, what are those things that we really want to see changed over a two-year period? Because ultimately, at the end of the day, while we've seen great work done by the Planning Commission, and there's a lot of ways in which those advisory committees can work for us and can work for council to make things happen, I think it's important to remember that every meeting we have is subject to the Open Public Meetings Act. We have to ensure that the meetings are noticed, that the meetings are staffed, and that ultimately, there's a substantial amount of resources dedicated by staff to get some of those things moved forward. I think as it's incorporated in the strategic plan, I think staff can provide to council basically a schedule. This is how the process is going to work. This is what we anticipate going to the committee and when. This is when it will elevate to the council level, and basically just provide an outline or a timeframe of how those items move forward. But to me, it starts with the strategic plan.
Okay. And that makes sense, but it's true that there's a lot of things in our strategic plan that we know are coming, we just don't know when. And maybe that might be the thing that we request, because I know that there's a lot of things on trees and the parking, and we talked about vacant property, you know, so some of those, we know they're coming, we just don't, you know, we're kind of left thinking, whoa, you know, we haven't heard anything, so what about this? You know, so, so we move on to the next topic. So I think that would, that would really help getting everything on our strategic plan with a timeline and a date, and what committee is going to be looking at that, or if there is a committee or not. I think that would be useful and helpful.
I do think it's important to remember, or, I shouldn't say it that way, because I don't want to imply a complete lack of understanding, but it occurs to me that this, this meeting is a good example of the Utility Advisory Committee working well, because we did look at those two issues ahead of time, and there was a, a question raised during the public comment period, which led us to remove a portion of what was proposed, to bring back to the UAC to evaluate further before it came to council. And so, so there is a lot of work, I guess I'm saying, I think it's important to acknowledge that maybe we could do more, and there is still, there is already a fair amount of good work being done on things that, that we want to see happen, but being done at the committee level before it comes to us.
Council, if I, if I can share a couple other points, I think it's important, there are dates in the strategic plan of when we anticipate getting to those projects. The intent is that it's also communicated through the work plan, and I know we're working to improve the website relative to the work plan itself, so that council's got a little bit better ability to see it and the relationship to the strategic plan. But ultimately, the work plan also has some of those dates, and what we tried to do is basically establish some tentative ballpark timeframes within the strategic plan, fine-tune those dates a little bit more in the work plan, and then ultimately, take those work plan dates and incorporate it in the council annual calendar, which I recognize, I'm about a meeting delinquent, and getting that to you, I should have had it today, but I will get it to you at the next meeting, just an update of the calendar. But that typically has all of those strategic plan items that are going to happen this year, and it anticipates when those are going to be presented to council. What it, what it doesn't have, though, is the Planning Commission picture, the Parks Recreation Beautification Commission picture, and some of those things which I know are also important to council. But I'll, I'll throw out another example, because it's important. I know that council has stressed the importance of implementing some code changes relative to housing. Seen some follow-through relative to the Housing Needs Assessment, and that's something that we've been talking a lot about this week. We're in the process of packaging a timeframe, schedule, and laying out the process of how we move those forward, at least the low-hanging fruit aspects of follow-through on the Housing Needs Assessment, but that's an example. So we're, we're proactively going to be putting that together for council, bringing it to you for your information to say, here's what we anticipate that schedule looking like, here's the process that it's going to go through.
Okay. Well, and I guess sometimes as well, in the combination, so, I mean, we talked about parks, and we've talked that, you know, Parks is having, has done a couple of presentations outside, but we haven't seen that presentation, and it would be great if we can get Cory to come and present here. So doing a, a work plan on that, is that something, I mean, I think we can just add that to the agenda, but I don't know if we need more council blessing on that, and if everybody feels that way. Because I know that that was one of the things we talked about, budget, knowing, you know, how stressed and how tight his budget is, so...
Yeah, if, if that's something that council would like to see, a presentation that one of our staff members have done, you're more than welcome to provide that direction tonight and say, hey, bring it back at the next meeting. But it would helpful, I know there's multiple presentations provided, and I don't know if Cory knows the exact presentation we're talking about, it's important to make sure we pin down which one.
Yeah.
I was just going to say, as the mayor, or as the city manager, you can unilaterally put things on the agenda for our meetings. For the rest of us, we need a majority vote or a motion of the council in order to put something on the agenda. So, I mean, that's your prerogative. If you want to hear that presentation, you can put it on the agenda.
Yeah. And I just, like I said, I guess maybe, maybe I, maybe I'm erring on the side of being too inclusive. Just put it on the agenda then. Okay. So...
Can I just add one little thought? This is different, this changed the subject a little bit, about our, you know, we're talking about our commissions and advisory boards. We're also put on a bunch of boards as council members, and I do think that it would be a good idea for us to have a discussion about that at a future date, to say, hey, you know, I mean, some of the boards we're required to be on, and that's fine, but some of them, you know, is this a good fit? What's, what are we learning? What are, you know, should this be a council member, a staff member? Because I think sometimes there's not, there's not an exact match, and so I think that that's something that we should talk about.
Actually, that's a really good one, and that's actually a really good topic for the think tank. Right, because it's, it is kind of nebulous, and I can, you know, I can tell you all the committees I'm on and what's going on, and then see whether anybody's interested. I know I'll vacate those, and then there'll be issues of...
Well, and then, you know, in January, we're going to have to redo this again. And so if we don't have a discussion about it, we're not going to be informed for, like, the next council to say, okay, what, what's our committees that we're on, and how we're...
Yeah. No, I, I think that's good. So do we want to do that one for the next think tank agenda? Is that a high enough priority? Or at least, we'll just put it on there to begin with.
I, I like the suggestion of doing it in anticipation of having three new council members, and also thinking about when our next strategic planning retreat is, knowing that we're having major turnover on the council, and basically, none of us will have been on for more than two years at the end of this year. So with that thought in mind, I, I do think it's important for us to think about how this stuff integrates into that transition for nearly a majority of the council.
Okay. So I like the idea of talking about transition as well, and what it is that you guys who are staying might want to know and more, and have, and, and then the committee work, existing committees. All right. So any other conversation on that, on the advisory boards? So, because we've kind of transitioned into the, the items, and so I put...
Can I, one more thing on advisory boards. I think it would be helpful for us, probably at the beginning of next year, to spend some time on just rules of procedure, or rules of order, and I think it would be great to invite the chairs of the advisory boards to that conversation, so that they can get more training on how to run meetings.
I think that's excellent. Okay. So, all right. So in front of you, also, there should be just two pages on all the topics. These are a long time ago. We did our, we threw in all those ideas, and so, and I think, yeah, so page...
Paperclip to the Smart...
Right, it's paper...
It's paperclip to the Smart Communities Award winners.
Yep. And so, and they're in, in the order that we sort of voted them in. So, but double-check to make sure that page one, and I think page one is stapled backwards, So it was interesting to kind of go through, I was trying to update some of these things, and we've done some of, you know... and we've done some of, you know, quite a bit of these things, at least dealt with some of them, creating the Affordable House Housing Task Force, adding the zoning 101 class that took place, you know, the addressing housing. So the housing task, you know, the, the housing assessment report is done, and now hopefully you're getting to the actionable items. Then I know the, the need to, you know, a roundtable with the developers. I know that Randy called me up and he said he's going to try to get us all together, try to talk to a couple of developers to really get something moving forward. So he's really pushing on that, so I'm happy to kind of tag along with him to see how much housing we can develop here. I know the rentals and the Airbnb still being, I think, reviewed by legal. I believe that that's still happening, right? Then, so we've had council and county meetings, and the code enforcement, we've had our workshop, and we're still looking for funding, but, and like I said, I, I was kind of, as I was going through this, I was kind of glad to at least see the whole list together and kind of looking at some of the updates, some of the things that we might still want to do. But, so this is where I thought, okay, so what's the next think tank idea? What's the next conversation that we should have? So we'll talk about transitions and our existing committees. I know the, the vacant lot and the empty house, you know, the, some of those things are still on our work plan, but I don't know whether, whether it's worthwhile for, you know, staff knows exactly now, you know, what we sort of want to, and I think it may be a periodic update on where things are, might be the, might be helpful for us. But as a think tank, what do you guys want?
Well, we're, we're halfway through the year, and maybe just an update on the strategic plan and kind of where those items are, that, that could be valuable. One of the challenges we've had is we've created a number of priority lists, and then prioritizing the priority list becomes a priority, which doesn't work very well.
Right. It does.
So, I, I mean, I think I agree with City Manager Wes that the, the strategic plan is the priority list for the near term. The comprehensive plan is the long-term priority list, but the strategic plan really drives that. And so that's what I would want to look for as far as how are we doing and, you know, where are things at and what's been pushed to the back burner that we aren't comfortable with on the back burner? And if we're not comfortable with that, then, you know, how do we get it up front, move something else to the back?
And that's true. So the think tanks were to just be able to have that free conversation of a topic that's either related to our strategic plan or not. So, again, if there's items that you guys want to continue to add or not.
I feel like we've got a decent list for going forward, and, and because you've raised the question, we can all ruminate and bring back ideas to the future or just let you know.
Yeah.
A couple of mine. On our list was the tenant protection ordinances. I do think that, you know, we hear about the rental vacancy rate, I do think there is a basic power imbalance when the vacancy rate is that low. And so one of the notes that I have is a 60-day notice of rent increase, which I think basically doubles, you notice?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
That's something that City Vancouver incorporated after their housing task force a couple of years back. Other than that, the PBIA, I have ideas on what to do with our downtown business improvement area, increasing the geographic area, diversifying the funding sources, et cetera.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Sounds good. We'll continue to add them as two priorities to discuss.
You mentioned the roundtable with developers and that the county is taking the lead. I think the development that's happening in the county is very different than what we need to be seeing in the city, so I'm not entirely comfortable with deferring to the county on that one. You know, long-term, the cities need to be concentrated, walkable, livable, transit-oriented development clusters with the county in between, and if we continue with the kind of development we've been seeing in the county, we're not going to have that. So it's important that we develop as an urban space while the county develops as a rural space, and we not try and blend those two or think that there's a one-size-fits-all solution for the rural space and the urban space.
And, and I completely agree with that. And so we were talking about development here in Port Angeles in the city and/or the urban growth area, but that, that's the area we were concentrating in, so, yeah. So hopefully that'll work. Okay. Any further discussion? Because I think that's, that, that gets us further. All right. So we are done with the think tank then. The next thing, oh, I, I know we've done council reports, I just forgot one more thing that I will put out there for folks. We helped, I guess I had a couple of conversations with Rebecca Dixon. She wrote her, her thesis on bridging gaps between constituents and policymakers in climate policy in Washington State. There's a couple of recommendations here, and so I will go through them, highlight them, and I'll bring them back for council, but I just got this, I guess it was today or yesterday. So I just, it was kind of nice that we were able to help her with that. So let's move on to information, city manager's report.
Counsel, thank you for the opportunity to provide some additional information tonight. We do have one important item on, which is a stage one water shortage declaration. It's located on page L5 of your packet. Stage one essentially means that we're making internal preparations in anticipation of a water shortage. So that's something that we're moving forward with as of today. We want council to be aware of that. We are continuing to follow the situation closely. Obviously, Governor Inslee did declare a drought emergency for Clalum County, and it's something we're going to continue to follow throughout the summer and probably have additional updates at future council meetings. Council is aware that also tomorrow, we do have the auditor's exit conference at this time. We don't have a majority of council attending, so we, we have not advertised it as a public meeting. But just as a reminder, we'll be getting out to council as soon as that exit conference is complete, getting out to council, hopefully an email that provides an update as to the outcome of the audit, and hopefully that's helpful to council. There's a number of other good reports and information items in your packet, including a construction update as well as a building report, and that concludes city manager information.
Wonderful. Thank you. So now, folks, it's time for the second public comment period. So anybody in the audience who would like to address the council?
Mary Lee Smith. I believe you all, as council members, took an oath to uphold our Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and the laws of Washington State. So I don't understand the Charter for Compassion. It sounds forced, it sounds fake. It isn't civic-minded. It's slack, it's, it smacks of slack, slack division. I, I can't say a word, sir, today. It's a feel-good measure with the only purpose of boosting the egos of the participants. Don't fall into the trap of virtue signaling. It's not helpful. It makes people think that words are the same as actions. They aren't the same. If people want to change laws, they need to lobby. It's not about signing an online petition, it's about getting out there and being part of the community. This kind of absolves people from being part of the community. The golden rule is biblical. It's due unto the others as you would have them doing to you. That's Matthew 7:12. I think we need to stay away from this. I think it's a really bad idea, and I would certainly look into who's behind this, because it just sounds like another way of people giving up their rights instead of learning how to actually work within government. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else in the audience who would like to address council? All right. Seeing no one, it looks like we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate it.